All right, it is six o'clock, Monday, February 7th, 2022. We'll call our meeting to order. Start off with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll get our meeting underway. Start off with the roll call, please.
Simonsen?
Yes.
Rickrell?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Colster?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Holm?
Yes.
Okay, our next order of business is public participation. Do we have anybody here that would like to speak before the council tonight?
Yes, go ahead, can I sit?
As long as you're close enough to the microphone, or you can go up to the podium if you'd like. I would ask, before you begin, I would ask, keep your comments to at least three, no more than three minutes.
Okay.
Okay?
My name's Ginger Bennett. I've met quite a few of you. Some of you are actually quite new to me. I'm the chicken lady. So, but anyway, I just wanted to say hi and thank a lot of you for the support and really looking into matters and asking questions and so forth. But I'll keep that. Can I keep it open for questions after the ordinance is read? If there's concerns, I'd like to, that we've had time to discuss any concerns afterwards, or?
Play it by ear and see how it goes, I guess. All right? Anybody else wish to address the council on anything?
Mayor, just one moment. Is there anyone on Zoom that would like to speak for public participation? If so, can you raise your hand on the Zoom toggle? I see Margie's hand up, is that correct? Margie, can you unmute yourself if you're going to speak? And please identify yourself.
I'm Margie Donich, and I'm just here to support the chicken ordinance. I don't know, you know, when you want us to speak, if, but I'm here.
Would you like to speak to this item when it comes up, or do you want to voice your support now?
When it comes up.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else on Zoom or in the audience? Come on, come on, so we can hear you.
Is here okay?
My name is Desiree Blanchard, and I'm from First Ward. I'm also here to support the chicken ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
I'm Dina Ochola from Fourth Ward, and I'm also here to support the chicken ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
I am Beth DeGraw, and I think I'm Fifth Ward. I'm here to support the chicken ordinance.
Okay. Okay, if there's nobody else, we'll move on. Next presentations, we have none. Our next item is our consent agenda, consisting of tonight's agenda, the minutes of the January 17th, 2022 meeting, our bills. We have the approval of the fire department officers, who I'll run through for the audience real quick. Our fire chief this year is Matt Tranel. Assistant chief is Carl Al Mohousen. Deputy chief is Mark Beck. The three captains are Peter Schuler, Craig Mohousen, Bjorn Beck. Lieutenant is Robert Mitchell. Safety officer is Bob Lane. Training officer is Ryan Myers. Bjorn Beck is a secretary and records clerk. Treasurer is Greg Bopes. Fire prevention is Greg Bopes. And maintenance one is Al Mohousen. Maintenance two, Corey Simonsen. And maintenance three slash custodian is Zachary Colster. We also have a proclamation. Dave Hayes was kind enough to bring this to our attention. It's proclamation making March 30th, 2022 Iowa Honeybee Day. So I will make proclamation that March 30th, 2022 is Makoka's Honeybee Day in Iowa. We have a Class E liquor license and Sunday sales renewal filed by Casey's General Store, number 2578, and a Class C beer permit, Sunday sales renewal filed by Dollar General, number 2295.
Still moved, second.
Got a move by Colster, seconded by, seconded by Lyon. Do we have any discussion? Then take the roll, please.
Rickrell?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Colster?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Holm?
Yes.
Simonsen?
Upstayed.
Okay, motion passes. Next is our public hearing portion of the meeting. The first one we'll start off with is a public hearing for the YMCA's CDBG grant.
Good evening, council. With us in the audience tonight is Kim Glazer. She's with ECIA. She administers these grants. She's asked to speak on behalf of this item on the public hearing.
Good evening, mayor and city council members. I am Kim Glazer with ECIA, and I do have some information on that CDBG, or CV, Public Facilities Grant. We're talking about doing some facility improvements to the YMCA building. The specific needs were identified through planning sessions with the YMCA CEO, COO, the city manager, and an architectural design firm. So they kind of identified the deficiencies and the needs in the facility. Specifically, GZI, a contractor, identified the replacement need of the air handling unit and pool heater during their most recent preventative maintenance session. And this was confirmed by an HVAC certified mechanical director from the YMCA Iowa Mississippi Valley Organization, who also looks at the facilities and mechanicals. So how the proposed activities will be funded and the source of funds. The YMCA has secured $30,000 in grants, $75,000 in contributions, and they have budgeted up to $400,000 in their CIP fund. We're looking at requesting somewhere between $450,000 to $700,000, depending on how the costs come in to do the replacement of that air handling unit and the pool heater. And we're looking hopefully to submit that application by late February. The sooner the better. The state Iowa Economic Development Authority does have a lot of funds available. There are plenty of other communities that are applying those, so we want to get that submitted as soon as possible. The estimated portion of the CDBG funds requested that will benefit the persons of low to moderate income. The YMCA does provide scholarships for 25% of their membership in the community, with 24% of those people living in poverty. They also provide services to the school system, which has about a 60% free and reduced lunch program. So all of those individuals will benefit. Also, they provide scholarships, private scholarships, to about 1,000 unique individuals annually in a community of 6,100. So it's going to benefit quite a large percentage of low to moderate income individuals, and that's specifically what CDBG funds are intended for, helping the low to moderate income individuals. Where the proposed activities will be conducted will be the local YMCA facility. And it will be their pool area and specific mechanical room. They may be looking at doing some other painting and possibly some parking lot and concrete improvement. So we're going to see where the costs come in and how much we can include in the application to kind of get the biggest bang for the buck here. Plans to minimize displacement of persons and businesses as a result of these activities. They can utilize the Dubuque and Quad Cities YMCA free of charge if the members choose. And they were, the YMCA is also going to work out a reciprocal program with the DeWitt Heart Center. So there will be activities or other, you know, facilities that the members could use while these improvements are going on, if in fact it does affect the normal activities. And plans to assist persons that are actually displaced. We don't foresee that, so no people will be displaced. And the nature of the proposed activities, I know I've discussed it a bit, so it's primarily pool handling equipment unit, and that is at the point where it needs to be replaced, or they're going to risk interruption in service of the facilities. And there's currently a lead time of up to 34 weeks. So if the unit goes down now, it could be out of commission for 34 weeks. So it's pretty serious. A caveat with these funds is it does need to be all spent by June 30th of 2023. So we're looking at hopefully being awarded the funds and getting it facilitated, and the repairs and improvements conducted as soon as possible, and the money completely spent. So that's kind of, in a nutshell, what the CDBG funding is for.
Thank you, Kim. Scott Warren with the YMCA. Just wanted to kind of add to what she had said. Obviously, it's a city building on city land. We manage city revenue, city expenses. And the CDBG grant would be on behalf of the city, not on behalf of the Y. So we're hoping to put everything together as far as costs, cost estimates, things like that. I did want to add also, even since our last discussion last week, we had GZI back in, and we've got another rooftop unit that's down. So our second largest unit is down. What they're saying is that'll need to be replaced within the next couple of years. So we have a cost estimate that we're looking at or we're working on right now. Hope to have that yet this week. And then this would be the type of thing that could also be worked into a CDBG grant. You know, Kim had talked about making sure as far as interruption in service. What we're looking at now with the 34-week lead time with the air handling unit, I would reinforce to all of you guys, keep in mind that the unit right now is not in the best of shape. We'll continue to get it operating or keep it operating as best we can. But there is that opportunity that if the unit goes down, we can't operate a pool. So it's not in good shape. This is one of the units that, kind of the key unit when we went through arbitration, that was referenced. We had said that the life expectancy had been cut down on that unit, and this is kind of bearing, bearing out as those things move forward. But what we're looking at now is more of a two-pronged, where here in the fall, we'd address painting and flooring and some of those types of things, and then look to most likely mid-March if we get a CDBG grant, and then do all of the pool work altogether at that time. So we just have the pool down one time.
Okay.
Thank you, Scott. Thank you, Kim.
Yeah, I do. You said there's a 34-week lead time, and, but the money had to be spent by June 30th, which is 20 weeks?
No, 23.
Twenty, so that means you have to buy it by then? You have to order the parts by then? Otherwise, you're going to lose the money, or?
It'd be June of 2023.
Oh, of 2023.
Yeah. And then we should hear back from CDBG by April?
Yeah, we'd say 30 days.
Okay.
There's a few environmental review issues that we finish up, and so we should be able to get going quickly out of the box after we get an approval. You know, we're going to have to put in the bid that who does, whoever gets the job does complete it so we can get the funds spent.
You have any idea what the timeframe of actually doing the job is once you have all the parts and have someone to do it?
That really, actually, that's not going to be the biggest part, because we'll be painting the pool at the same time. So from the time you start taking water out to the time you refill is at least three weeks. Sometimes it's up to a month. The replacement of the air handling unit should be a couple of weeks. But yeah, we'll end up having to wait more time just with painting the pool, all the prep, and letting it dry and things like that.
Right.
Scott, how many years were cut off that, on that air system?
15 years is typically the absolute minimum. Typically, you're going to get 20, if not a little more than that. I know some units I hear, you know, 25 years, but, so I think it's safe bet at least five years.
Was there no money set aside? Josh, you were on. Well, that was all part of the arbitration. Right. So there is money. I don't remember the dollar amount exactly, but that was basically our main argument, is these engineers basically cobbled the whole building. Right. So that was our anchor to get the cash. So, and then we've been talking about this Monters unit for, Jesus, as long as I can remember almost. So we just need to get moving on it. It's time to.
Yeah, and we looked at, right now, we've got in there about $210,000 left from the arbitration. We would certainly rather get it through a CDBG grant. In the ideal world, we get a CDBG grant, we don't have to touch those dollars, and then we'd have those for the next time, or the next pool furnace, or the next HVAC unit, or, so it can help us to maintain that, that CIP.
What's the shelf life on these water heaters? It seems like we're replacing these like every other year, at least.
Oh, we had, there were, that's part of, that was part of the settlement too, the way it was plumbed, and yeah, there were several things that.
I was just surprised to see it again on here.
Yeah, this was, because we went through one right away, and then went through another one two years later. And then we had to replumb, replumb the pool furnace, do some additional work with the unit we have now. The unit we have now is about eight years. You usually look to get 10. Sometimes you can get up to 15, but it's usually kind of 10 to 12 with those units. And what we're finding with all the prices that are coming in, everything has just gone up exponentially.
Does anybody else have any questions?
How much, how much does it cost, buy for this grant? Like, how much is this going to cost the city and the taxpayers?
There's, there's no cost to the taxpayers as far as the CDBG grant. So those are federal dollars, that's my understanding, and it's COVID-related money. So the HVAC units are certainly a sweet spot, because you can increase the air quality. It, it just lines up well with, with the COVID dollars, so.
Problem is, without the grant, it's all coming out of taxpayer dollars. So.
Then it would come out of the.
You apply for the grant anyway.
Yeah, then it would come out of the CIP, which, which we do have in there, but we would just assume not have to utilize it at this time if we don't have to, so.
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second. Motion by Colster, seconded by Lyon, to close this public hearing. Go ahead and take the roll.
Lyons?
Yes.
Colster?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Holm?
Yes.
Simonsen?
Yes.
Rickrell?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to item B. It's a public hearing for maximum property tax dollars. Josh, you want to explain that one?
Same thing as the last meeting as well on this. This is, this is from the state, state requirement that assesses our annual valuations and puts a ceiling on how far we can raise taxes as a community. This is a nice feature Iowa has. Our, our ceiling increase is 2%. It's a good thing. No matter what, we'd always like to stay below. But that is just a ceiling we're recognizing here, and it's telling us that 2.785 million is what we can, what we can levy. So it's a good thing, and we request your support.
Do we have any questions for Josh? Entertained a motion to close this public hearing.
Home?
Second.
Motion by Colster, seconded by Holm. Take the roll.
Colster?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Holm?
Yes.
Simonsen?
Yes.
Rickrell?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
All right, we move on to item eight, which is old business. It's a discussion and possible motion to approve payment in the amount of $49,609.12 to WHKS for the water treatment plant project. Go ahead.
For this item, we are under contract with our design firm, WHKS. We have Jeff Bodenhoffer in the audience tonight, in the audience tonight for any extremely detailed questions, but we're on a professional services agreement with them. And the agenda I wrote, December 21st to 21, it's actually 20 that this goes back to. We're in it for $1.15 million as it relates to our wastewater treatment facility design, which is at about 60% completed, and we'll go to the state here shortly. We ask for your support in submitting this payment.
Home moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Lyon. We have a second by Holm. Do we have any discussion here? Then take the roll.
Coleman?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Holm?
Yes.
Simonsen?
Yes.
Rickrell?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Colster?
Yes.
Okay, item B is a resolution approving community development block grant coronavirus funding for the city of Makoka, Public Facilities Assistance Project.
Still moved.
Second.
Okay, we had a motion by Colster. Lyon was the second. And if we, do we have any discussion? Then take the roll.
Good?
Yes.
Holm?
Yes.
Simonsen?
Yes.
Rickrell?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Colster?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Item C is a resolution approving the maximum tax dollars for certain levies for the city's proposed fiscal year 2022-2023 budget.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Simonsen, seconded by Holm. Do we have any discussion on this item? If not, take the roll.
Holm?
Yes.
Simonsen?
Yes.
Rickrell?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Colster?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
All right, item D is a discussion and possible motion to approve payment of the downtown incentive grant in the amount of $50,000 to GT Development LLC for renovation of the Mitchell Masquerade Mill.
Second.
Moved by Colster, seconded by Lyon. Any discussion here? Then take the roll.
Simonsen?
Yes.
Rickrell?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Colster? Coleman?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Holm?
Yes.
Item E is a discussion and possible motion to approve payment of $50,000 to GT Development LLC as city provided matching funds for the catalyst grant.
Still moved.
Second.
Moved by Colster, seconded by Lyon. If you're ready, take the roll.
Rickrell?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Colster?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Holm?
Yes.
Simonsen?
Yes.
All right, we move on to item nine, new business. And item A is a discussion and possible motion to approve payment in the amount of $11,750 to Sheets Construction for the rehabilitation of the Public Works salt shed.
Still moved.
Second.
Moved by Simonsen, seconded by Rickrell. We have no discussion. Take the roll.
Lyon?
Yes.
Colster?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Holm?
Yes.
Simonsen?
Yes.
And Rickrell?
Yes.
Item B is the first reading of an ordinance, adding chap, two, chapter three, and title four, Code of Ordnances for the City of Makoka regarding backyard chickens.
Well, mayor, council, this is, I think, driven probably the biggest turnout on Zoom we've had in a long time and in person. So thank you to everyone who's paying attention and with us here tonight. We appreciate your support and appreciate you coming to the meeting to help decide with the council what to do here. I've laid out some highlights in this ordinance. Mallory Smith, who was the interim manager, helped along with the Public Safety Committee to, to really author this ordinance, and it's their work that has been put forth here, and that they've done a hefty amount of research into trying to choose the best ordinance possible for the city of Makoka. But what we're asking for here is an initial application fee of $40, along with a $10 annual renewal. The proposed parcel being zoned for residential or agriculture use. The proposed parcel having a one single family dwelling occupied by the owner. Proof of completion for an approved class for raising chickens in a backyard environment. The permit shall keep or, no permit shall keep or harbor more than six chickens. No person shall keep or harbor roosters. Hen houses must provide a minimum of four square feet per chicken with one large laying box for every two hens and one linear foot of roosting bar per hen. And the hen house and chicken run shall be enclosed on all sides and shall have a roof and doors which access shall be secured at night with a protective wire meshing that you'd see to protect it from, from coyotes or any other predator. And the closures must be at least 10 feet away from adjoining property lines. That's what I took out as highlights. Now, there is in the attachment that went out some more detail, but that's what I pulled out for your consideration tonight. There were a couple of members here that were with us that perhaps wanted to speak more into detail about this particular item. If you wanted to engage with Mallory Smith, I can make her a co-host of this meeting, and perhaps you can answer questions and answers with her. I leave that up to you.
Okay, do, does anyone here have questions?
I, I'm concerned about, do we have the manpower and man-hours to enforce such an ordinance? First of all, and the other concern I have is, what if you, where I live, we have a driveway between the houses. We're that close to each other. So what if your neighbor is just absolutely against having chickens right next to their yard? Does that neighbor have any say-so in you getting a permit, or is that all on you? I didn't see anything on that in the ordinance. There's no safety net for the neighbors that's totally against it. And it's most of the people that I've heard from outside of the group that's pushing this ordinance are against it. So I'm asking questions for them and for myself.
May I address those?
Sure.
The yard distance, you have to be 10 foot away from any adjoining property.
Right.
10 feet away from your dwelling.
Hmm.
I don't see why anybody would like be over uptight about chickens. I mean, we're talking about a handful of birds. We're not talking about a flock of chickens. We're talking about a handful of very small birds, so. And how would that be different from any other pet if somebody wanted a dog?
No, we're not talking about pets here. We're talking about raising animals for food. That's, that's an agricultural pursuit. That's what this whole thing is about, is people be able to get eggs to feed their families from their chickens. So now we're talking not about pets, but about agricultural pursuit. And there's where my concerns come up.
It does say backyard, so, and it can't be in the side yard to where, I think you were referring to like the driveway?
Well, I'm just referring to a lot of the houses in Makoka are that close together.
There's a lot of houses that won't qualify. They won't have the space.
So they would have to meet that in, through the inspection in order to have, in order to be able to maintain it?
Hmm.
Mayor, if I may, I, I would prefer that Mallory Smith answer a lot of these questions and not members from the public, since she helped out quite a bit on this. And I know you guys worked with her on this, but I'd rather have someone from staff be able to answer these concerns and be able to logically explain out what was been thought about, what's been asked up until this point. Because Mallory does have a building inspection background. She might be able to have some explanation as to how Brad and others be able to do this job and try to prevent a problem. Mallory, you on?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Yeah, all sun soaked.
It's my Coleman's background. So we did take into consideration the 10 feet. The question was about the staffing. This is somewhat similar to the rental inspection, and I think that, that they're staffing for that, the, the fee, the $40 initial and the $10 renewal is basically to pay for that, that inspection. And, and the question about whether the neighbors have a say in none of the other processes. So a building permit or a variance, do the neighbors have a say? There, there is a requirement to inform the neighbors. a say? There is a requirement to inform the neighbors of a variance within 200 feet, but they aren't the deciding body. The zoning board of adjustment is. So it would be similar to other things that the city does in that the requirement is on the property owner and not subject to neighbor review.
Some of that's eliminated by the setbacks.
And there's not likely to be 500 licenses granted all of a sudden.
You're right.
So this is probably going to be limited to maybe, I don't know, 20 or 30 people in the whole city.
There's about 25 that have chickens currently in Macochona. I expect maybe another 10, 15 more. It's not like we're going to get bombarded or rushed with a bunch of people and chickens. It's not cheap.
And it's not easy. It's a pretty strict ordinance.
You're right. It is very strict, and I think it's a perfect ordinance. I think Mallory did an exceptional job with it. I've been to every single meeting when we've discussed this and we've passed emails back and forth. It's very solid. It's a very sound ordinance, and I think it's perfect.
Especially compared to what many other communities have. This is quite comprehensive compared to others that I've seen, similar to Macochona or even larger.
Mayor, it appears we have two comments from public on Zoom.
Okay.
Let's address those. First is from Jennifer Meyer. I'm going to ask her to unmute.
Good evening, City Council. I'm Jen Meyer, and this evening I'm going to be professionally representing myself through Jackson County Conservation as an educative naturalist. My contribution to tonight's discussion is that I'm going to be offering my professional services as an educator to provide those backyard chicken owner education courses. So any further questions about wildlife and chicken interactions, about chicken care, what those classes look like, what the certification is, I'm happy to answer those. I've been in contact with several interested parties here in the community and simply offering my voice as one of support for the ordinance as a, locally speaking, I'm a chicken mama. I like them. But also as an educator, and what can we do to make our neighbors and our communities more agriculturally aware and inclined?
I would like to also say that in the ordinance, a class is required in order to have that license or that permit granted.
And that's where Jen comes in.
Then there are many classes available online and in person across the country, in our area especially, but we would really like to have something available locally as much as possible. And why not use that resource that's right here in our own community?
I have set aside two weekends in April where I can host as many classes as necessary to make sure that everyone has a quality experience. Classes would be a minimum of 90 minutes, either Zoom or in person. And also, I would be willing to offer up my personal property as an educational area as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Kristi has her hand up.
I just, sorry, can I go?
Yes, floor is yours.
Hi, Council. Hi, Mayor. As the chamber director, I just kind of wanted to chime in. I have a neighbor who has chickens, and I honestly, we never hear them. We don't know they have them unless we like look in their backyard and we see them. So I just kind of wanted to say that I do support this ordinance, and there are definitely some responsible chicken owners who would be in the city, and I believe this is a great thing for our city.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any other discussion?
Yes, please.
Yeah.
I have one question as to where this ordinance is born from. As the comment was made, there are 20 some people in the city that already have chickens. Is the ordinance born from more people wanting to have chickens, or is it born from we need some kind of controls on the people that already do have them, plus the new people that want them?
It's born from the fact that depending how you want to read the ordinance, whether you can have chickens or not exists. You could read the ordinance that we currently have in the books now, and chickens wouldn't be allowed. Or you could read the ordinance and say that there's a gray area and chickens are allowed. So there needed to be some sort of regulation done. It was for years and years assumed that chickens were not allowed. And then about seven or eight years ago, it came up, and it was had no, I mean, very little support. Like, it didn't get anywhere. And then Cory was on, and we went through all that, and then it disappeared until now, and here we are.
Okay. The reason I ask is because everyone that I've spoken to who is on the force side is talking about getting chickens in their backyards, not already having chickens in their backyards. I don't know, is this all coming from the want to have them, or is this coming from needing to have controls?
I don't think anybody was advertising the fact they had chickens, right? Because the way we read it before, geek, you know, now it's been more in light that people do have chickens. I just, I never had a neighbor that had chickens, so I didn't even know there were chickens in town. But now that this has come up, I've heard.
I've never had a neighbor in town that's had chickens, but I've had neighbors had chickens in other places I've lived. And my sister has chickens in her backyard, and you know they're there.
Do you have roosters? You know roosters are there. We're not alone, roosters. We're literally talking about a handful of chickens. We're not talking about like a whole bunch of them.
May I ask in what way that you know that they're there, other than looking at them and seeing them?
Hear them.
And when, how far away?
Well, next door.
And how far away is next door?
Well, just a typical next door neighbor in the city.
Okay.
Did I take my tape measure out and measure it? Absolutely not. If you live in Macochona, you know how close people live to one another.
So may I speak about the sound or nuisance ordinances that we already have? Yes, okay.
Got the floor.
So you might hear something, but it should not be, it should not disturb the regular enjoyment of someone's own property, as I read through some of those ordinances. That pertain to both animals, whether pets or any other definition of an animal, as well as any other person or mechanism. So barking dog is about 90 decibels, and clucking hens at their very loudest, and we're talking about maximum six, if they were seriously distressed in some way, I suppose, are about the decibel level of a human conversation, which is maximum 75. And I think, all right, barking dog is 90, maximum is 75 of a human conversation, and that depends on the proximity. And then also from the property line, it can be no more than 50. So if with 10 feet away, and just depending how far away that person's house is from the actual property line, I assume that most houses in town that would even be able to have this per the ordinance or per the regulations of the ordinance are likely not going to have their house that close to their property line, and then where the chicken or the hen house or the coop is allowed to be, and then hear them in a way that's going to be disturbing, like not waking them up at any particular time, anything like that. It's quite a common myth that they're going to be so loud that they're going to be disruptive. And frankly, they're much quieter than most dogs. I hear many dogs in my neighborhood, and by my neighborhood, I mean many houses away that can bark sometimes all night. I don't know where it's coming from, so even if I wanted to report it or something like that, or if not even just report it, just go to find the neighbor, hey, can you get your dog under control so I can sleep? I would have to get out and drive around the neighborhood. It's very unlikely for something like that to happen with chickens, especially considering that hens go to roost at night. The only time they're going to cluck or make noise at night is again, if something gets in there and gets them. But with the regulations that we have saying to make it secure and predator-proof, which does take some work, but not impossible, not impractical to do, really no reason that that should happen. I'd be curious to know more if there's time to even discuss it, you know, where your sister lives and what regulations they have, and what her setup is like, and how that compares to the ordinance that we have, because there could be issues where it may not be very well regulated, and of course, that would cause problems.
Well, she no longer lives in the state.
Okay.
Okay.
Mayor, as I say, whenever you're ready to proceed on this, I didn't mean to interrupt you at all, and I think that I jumped in in a split second too soon there, so just please go ahead.
Go ahead.
Okay, as far as the noise concern, I have somebody that lived the street over from me. I live on Fifth Street. She lives, I think it's Fourth Street over from me. I didn't know in the two years I've lived there that there was any chickens over there. I'm outside constantly. I have a dog that wants to be outside all the time. I never heard the chickens until they were turned in for having chickens. I never knew there was chickens there. I never heard of nothing. I'm outside all the time, day, night. Sometimes I sit out in my front porch to read. I've never heard chickens. So when people say, oh, well, they're noisy, okay, I, two years, I didn't hear no chickens, and she had five chickens. And so it's, I don't get where people are saying they're noisy. And it's like, nobody's going to have the chickens. I can't afford to do the proper things as per to the ordinance. So.
I'd like to also add, what is the source? Where is this coming from? Is it because people already have chickens or that they're interested in chickens? It's a combination of both. This started, this started in Macochona in 2017 specifically.
That was the first time I came to City Council.
That was the first time. And since then, a lot, an extensive amount of work has been done by many parties, particularly.
Mayor, we have a member online, and I believe it's Jessica. Has her hand up. She'd like to speak to this item as well.
Okay.
So this started pretty much with me this last time. I'm the one that got turned in for the chickens, me and my husband Jake. We'd had them for like two, two and a half years, and all of a sudden, the neighbor in the backyard that has lived there since we've lived here turned us in. And they have a dog that literally, we've called the police on, that charges us, charges our dogs, charges our kids. And we had to get rid of our chickens that were in a predator-proof coop that hadn't bothered anybody. Like, those chickens literally got us through COVID, because there were days that we couldn't get groceries because there was nothing there. So we relied on our chickens for the eggs. So I was fairly upset, because we'd had them, like I said, for two years, and all of a sudden, this lady just got a wild hair and turned us in.
Thank you, Jessica.
Thank you for your comments.
If I may finish, several other communities surrounding Macochona and throughout Iowa, and of course, countrywide, have implemented something like this. So there's interest. It's gaining in popularity. It's been popular for a very long time. And in my view, at least, I think it's better to have something, some kind of framework ready, because obviously, if there are people who already have chickens, and it's gaining in, or gaining in popularity in many other places, when you look at places like Dubuque, Davenport, DeWitt, that are not farms, those are cities, those are large cities, that not only permit them, but regulate them, and their ordinance is nowhere near as comprehensive as ours, and have not had any serious issues that would be, that would lead back to the needing to revisit of, we need to modify this because it's not working. That really hasn't been something that's been heard of very well. I'm not saying absolutely nothing would ever come up, but it's laid out, and there's a plan, ready to go to address those issues, and especially in a way that does not burden our local law enforcement, which is another concern voiced by people that we worked with in our community as well as in office here.
Chief, are we getting a lot of complaints? Have we gotten a lot of complaints on chickens? I mean, you're saying there's 25 of them in town.
No, not really.
This is an agricultural community, and it seems perfectly natural that there would be agricultural interests in town. Seems natural to me, normal.
As well as the interest is for, might be for eggs. Some people use chickens, particularly their manure with proper composting to eat in their garden. Chickens are great for pest control. They don't draw pests. They eat just about anything that will come in their path that's small enough. But also, along with us being an agricultural community, we have a huge 4-H community, and this could potentially grow interest for 4-H involvement and make things more accessible to kids, families that live in town, who, you know, just a different.
And the FFA community through the high school, they are very excited about.
So it makes it more inclusive, I guess, in that way.
Mr. Mayor, can we move on, please?
Yeah.
Okay, well, it's up to the council.
So moved. Second. I'd like to make the motion.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Lyon. We have a second by Home. If we have no council discussion, take the roll.
Colister?
Yes.
Coleman?
Coleman?
Yes. Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Home?
Yes.
Simonson?
No.
Rickrell?
No.
Lyon?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. That was the first reading of this ordinance. Next one is a ordinance, it's our first reading, adding chapter four to title four, the Code of Ordinances to the City of Macochona Regarding Beekeeping.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion by a.
Second.
Make up your mind.
Seconded by Coleman. If we have no discussion, then go ahead and take the roll.
Coleman?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Home?
Yes.
Simonson?
No.
Rickrell?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Colister?
Yes.
Okay, I would point out regarding the bees, two main points that Josh has pointed out here is the apiaries are only allowed in A1 agriculture zone parts of town and I3 heavy industrial, which is only two parcels in town.
It eliminates most of town.
Yeah, most of town. And they're both on the edge of town, so I just put that out there.
Can you send that out to us, too, Josh?
The agricultural zoning?
Yeah, where they're allowed to be zoned and where they're not.
Absolutely.
All right, item D is an ordinance, first reading. It's an ordinance amending title three, Community Protection, Chapter Three, Traffic Code, Subchapter 3D, 3G, Stop and Yield Intersections, Section One, Stop Intersection to the Code of Ordinances.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't take any offense if anyone leaves, by the way. I don't think this council does either, so you don't have to stick around for our sake. We can continue on with business just as a courtesy, and that goes for everyone on Zoom, too. The stop sign discussion comes to us from the Public Safety Committee. What currently is out in the public right now are stop signs along Main Street, Summit, Vermont and Summit, and Western and Summit. I don't need to tell you guys. You guys have been here longer than me, but what this ordinance is asking for is to keep the stop signs at Main and Vermont. So that's the way it's presented to you. I did write in my agenda that there's been a bit of a feedback from the community with a desire to keep the ones at Western, and that's not to at all override what the Public Safety Committee had done, but I just wanted to make sure that the council was aware that this has kind of come with some mixed review. But I leave it to you guys to discuss and to effectuate what you want.
So my comment on it would be, would it make more sense to look at the Western and Summit when that development comes around? I got comments both ways this week, more for than against. I've been against it because I hate that stop sign, but.
I wonder why.
What is their reasoning for keeping it, though? I think everyone says it improves traffic flow from what I got, but you're going to have that entrance not too far off of that intersection from the housing development, and you're also going to have one on the north side. So would it make more sense that the intersection at the entrance of the development have the stop signs? So Chief and I, well, Chief Karanda and I, had this discussion a month or two ago, because I wanted to see that sign gone before the snow hit and people were sliding down. And it hasn't been as, we haven't had that great of a winter either, that bad of a winter, and it hasn't really been an issue. I could go either way on it, but I didn't know if it merit, if there was some merit to seeing what that intersection happens. I mean, you're going to have, what, 50 feet from Western and Summit, probably, an entrance?
Yeah.
It's not going to be very far from the Western and Summit stops or that intersection now.
Maybe it's not such a bad idea just to keep it and wait till all that starts to happen, and then if there's a change, you need to then change it. That way, we only have to deal with it once.
Well, you're still dealing with it twice. What do you mean?
Well, if we take the stop, okay, if we take the stop sign down now, and we find out later when the construction begins on that subdivision, that we need a stop sign there, then we have to put it back up. Why don't we just leave it up?
I'm saying the stop sign would go on the division entrance, not on Western and Summit. So if it's going to be such heavy traffic there, is it going to be into and out? So is if it's gonna be such heavy traffic there, is it gonna be into and out of the subdivision? Or is it gonna be on and out of Western?
We're adding a new street just to feed from it.
Adding a new street.
And it's gonna be within fifty or sixty feet of that stop sign now.
Well, then, uh, is Western Avenue busy normally if there's no detour? Or is it?
Well, it was over the detour.
No? Well, that sounds like a pretty good idea. I, I, I really think there should be a stop sign there, sorry. Because of all that long, you know?
And if we do wait and to put it onto the new street, that would eliminate stopping uphill the way it is now.
That's true too.
It eliminates that concern in the wintertime.
That's a good idea, Josh. I think we should have.
The mayor and council, could I?
We should have a stop sign somewhere on Summit there, I think.
Frank, go ahead.
Um, since the, since the South Main Bridge is going up this summer, um, we have to redo the detour route. The detour route might be coming in on Summit from the west, past the Sales Barn. Um, so we might be directing a lot of traffic on, on Summit Street.
Well, you'd do the same thing that you did now.
Now the, now the official detour goes all the way down to South Main and comes in on South Main.
Yeah, but that's what I'm saying, when you do the detour on the bridge, the official detour, that would become a temporary stop again. It wouldn't be a permanent stop.
That, that's where I'm going. I think we should, from a public work standpoint, I think we should keep the sign at Western and Summit until the South Main Bridge is done and we'll see how the traffic flows then.
I don't care. It doesn't make, I mean, it's a temporary stop either way. I mean, we don't have to take it down now as long as it's a detour. It's the same thing.
I mean, I drive that every day, multiple times a day. I, I personally have advocated from the beginning that we keep that stop sign. Um, I think, and I know that you shouldn't use the stop sign to slow people down, but people coming from the rural area down through there are moving. And it does cause them to slow down before they get further into town. So I have to stop three times on my way to work every day and back. But, uh, I think it's, it's a good safety thing. I think no one gets backed up in any direction at any of those intersections now, which I think is, is a huge improvement over what they were before, so.
Okay, well, the ordinance we're voting on, if I read this correctly, is only dealing with the stop signs at Summit and Main and Vermont and Summit.
Do you have to vote this down?
We have to vote this down.
If, if you want the Western ones as well. That's what I was communicating, that if you, if you want the Western ones, please vote it down. If, if you're fine proceeding and revisiting it in the future and then adding a Western later or adding one to that subdivision street, proceed forward, vote yes.
So the detour doesn't hit Summit now, right? None of the official detours are hitting Summit now?
Correct. Now it goes all the way around the bypass.
None of those signs are enforceable technically now. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So where people are stopping, there's nothing we can do if they don't? I mean, we could stop them for ignorance, I guess.
The other side of that is, it took us a while to get people used to stopping at these stop signs. We, if we, it's not something that we flip off this year, flip back on next year, flip off the year after. I mean, I think we've got people in a pretty good pattern. I, I think we should lock down all three of these stop signs.
We also don't want the south side of town, just like the north side of town, where you have to go a block, you stop. You go a block, you stop.
Yeah.
Best street in town is Pershing Road. You don't have to stop.
Is, is that, uh, designed for that subdivision laid in stone? Or can that street be moved farther away from the intersection of Western and Summit? Does it have to be so close?
It is designed to get houses on both sides. So I think where that new street's coming out on Summit is sort of cast in stone. You know, for the best value for the buck for the developer. Well, every neighborhood, every street that borders on the Summit, there has to be a stop sign coming out of the neighborhood to get onto Summit because it's a major cut through road. So that's what you're gonna have to do is put a stop sign at each entrance, one for Western and one for Summit, coming out of the new neighborhood. You don't have to have a stop sign going into it. Because that's an easy flow coming down the street and turning into your street. But coming out, you gotta stop because that's through traffic.
Hey, do we have somebody wanting to address us on the Zoom?
I think Jennifer was speaking to the previous chickens item and the hand is still up.
I got comments to keep it, so I could care less. I mean, I hate that stop sign. But I would vote for the constituents that.
Hey, one, one thing I do want to clarify is, even though it's not an official stop sign, people can't be charged with violating a stop sign. However, they can be charged with fair to be a traffic control device. So even though they're there temporarily, I want to make that clear that it can't be open season on just going through that. You can still be cited, it's just, you'd be cited under a different traffic code violation season.
I'm gonna sit there and get you.
Mayor, it does appear Jennifer intended to have her hand up, so we'll ask her to unmute.
Go ahead, Jennifer.
All right, uh, again, as, um, uh, I'm not a resident of Macochota, but I do my daily business in Macochota. I work in Macochota. I am a graduate of Macochota and I am there every single day doing business and conducting my personal life. Personally, I feel that the stop signs as they exist right now flashing on Summit, on, uh, Main Street, on Western Avenue, the one on, uh, the middle of there, frankly, this is a godsend. As a teenager who learned how to drive on this road and as an out-of-town resident, every single stop is valuable in allowing our community to have safe passage on foot. Um, for us to grow as a community, we need to have pedestrians feel safe. We need to have communities feel able to be connected by footways. And not having those stop signs available cuts down a lot of our potential business to downtown. It cuts down on our safety and it cuts down on our community well-being. So, um, in regards to stop signs, please keep them. I realize I'm not a member of the Macochota community proper, but as a member of the larger community and as someone who does business, please, please keep those signs up. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, do we have a motion on this, one way or the other? We're gonna.
So moved. What you can do and just let it lie.
Take it down or keep it?
Uh, to keep it.
Second.
To keep it as written?
So.
To keep it as written and revisit the other one later.
So wouldn't we have to vote it down then?
The way, the way, the way Councilmember Good said that is that he's going to, is, correct me if I'm wrong, Councilmember Good, but to vote yes here, what he's suggesting is to vote for this ordinance as written and then revisit the stop sign, um, either at the neighborhood entrance or at Western at a later time when that's, when that's appropriate.
Okay, we have a motion by Good. Do we have a second? Second by Simonson. Go ahead and take the roll.
Good.
Yes.
Home.
No.
Simonson.
Yes.
Rickrell.
No.
Lyon.
No.
Colister.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Did that pass?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, very good. Item E is a resolution to establish a public hearing date of February twenty-first, twenty-twenty-one at six PM for the City of Macochota Community Development and Housing Needs Assessment.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, ECIA, um, Kim Glazer, uh, notified us that they need to do their annual housing study update. A public hearing is required for that each, each year. This is business as usual for the City Council.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Lyon, seconded by Rickrell. If we have no discussion, go ahead and take the roll.
Home.
Uh, yes.
Simonson.
Yes.
Rickrell.
Yes.
Lyon.
Yes.
Colister.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Okay, item F is a resolution establishing a public hearing date of February twenty-first, twenty-twenty-two at six PM for the twenty-twenty-one Community Development Block Grant Coronavirus CV Public Facilities, Public Spaces Application for the Project Initiative One Twenty.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. This one comes from the same funding source as the YMCA. Uh, and this is, uh, this is, this is really a substantial improvement and investment for downtown Macochota. And, uh, Jackson County Economic Alliance, um, has been working in the background for something like this for years. Uh, it's very nice. It's going to be here in Macochota and the building space is appropriate. And we have a good owner who's willing to invest a lot of their resources in this as well beyond what's being asked for in a CDBG application. Uh, from my perspective, I think that this is a, this is a wise investment, a one that is probably overdue and can be very useful for a community like Macochota that has a lot of recreational opportunities for people to work and telecommute and build a life here. I think it's a wise choice when we ask for your support when the time comes.
He's gonna do all the matching dollars himself.
That's correct. There's nothing being asked from, from council here. It's incredible.
The craziest thing I've ever heard. It's funny that people can do that.
Better make a motion pass.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Colister, seconded by Lyon. Uh, do we have any more discussion? And go ahead and take the roll.
Simonson.
Yes.
Rickrell.
Yes.
Lyon.
Yes.
Colister.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Home.
Yes.
Okay, next we have, uh, Reports and Communications. Item A is the council member reports. Does anybody have anything they want to add? Okay, how about the City Manager's Report?
I don't have much to add, Mayor. Just thank you for your patience tonight. Uh, we still did it in about an hour. Uh, we thank everyone that was online tonight to discuss the chickens ordinance, um, and explaining thoughtfully what, what's there and what's there to consider. Um, these are the agendas I intend to write for the future so everyone knows what, what's being voted on, uh, as well as the public. Um, and I just kind of wanted to communicate that, uh, we're gonna have the Finance and Personnel Joint Meeting, uh, with the Public Works Committee on February fifteenth at three PM. Um, gonna go over really kind of a highlight of the budget and some of the finances and considerations that we'll have looking into the next year. And of course, that affects everything, right? Property tax dollars and what's being requested in the levy and those things. So we're trying to make sure that we're as responsible as possible as a council, uh, trying to ask and be as efficient as possible for the citizens so that we can keep, uh, what we're asking down.
Okay. Uh, we don't have an executive session for tonight, so I accept a motion to adjourn. Motion by Colister, seconded by Simonson. Take the roll, please.
Rickrell.
Yes.
Lyon.
Yes.
Colister.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Home.
Yes.
Simonson.
Yes.
We're adjourned.